Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our first meeting in May. Today's Tuesday, May 6, 2025. We are obviously here live in person at City Hall. And for those of you who are finishing dinner and want to stay in your PJs, thanks for joining us by Zoom. We're going to go ahead and start with the invocation given by Councilmember Spencer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
For Father in Heaven, we come before the ingratitude this evening for this opportunity that we have to gather together as community leaders and as a community. We're thankful for the blessing it is to live in this beautiful area and for the freedoms that we enjoy. We are thankful for the opportunity that we have to counsel together this evening and pray that that will bless our conversations with civility and that we can work through the different questions that arise, that we can make the best decision for this community and these blessings and favors we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and as you see, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are up to, we'll take roll call. Councilmember Kurtz, President. Councilmember Ball, here. Mayor Pro Tem Cargill.
President.
Councilmember Spencer.
President.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
President.
All right. And if somebody might make a motion to excuse Councilmember Van Orman, she was supposed to be on vacation. Something else came up, but if we could, thank you. Thank you. I have a motion and second to excuse Councilmember Van Orman. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. All right, agenda approval. Are there any adjustments or changes?
Mayor, a couple of different items here that I'll do one by one. First, can we, I'll make a motion to move Workshop Discussion 11 up to eight point five for the sake of the people who are participating in that back east on time.
Right, we have a second? Second. All in favor? And any opposed? All right, so we'll be moving Workshop 11 to just before general business.
Mayor, my second motion is on moving Item 14A off of the agenda tonight to the next meeting of, I know Councilmember Van Orman is really interested in participating in our discussion, not only on 14A, but also on 15A. So I think it would be more than fair to just move that to the next meeting if possible.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of moving Resolution 02048G to the next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let me, can I get hands up? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five one.
And then same motion on 15A as well, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a second to move ordinance from 15A to the next meeting?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of moving 15A to our next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five one. All right. Any others, any other requested changes to the agenda? All right, not hearing it.
No others. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Okay, we are up to announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. What? Oh, sorry. How did I do that? Just so excited about things falling off the agenda. All right, this is our time for citizen comments. So anybody here in the chambers who'd like to make a comment, we have yellow half sheets on the table next to the door. You're welcome to comment on any topic on or off the agenda. You have three minutes. It's truly a comment period, no back and forth with the council, but if we need to follow up with you, we will make sure we have your contact info and staff will follow up. And so for those of you online, just send a note to the meeting host in the chat feature and we will get you on board. So I don't see any half sheets. Is there anybody in chambers who'd like to make a comment that didn't fill anything out? Okay, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Anybody online? No, all right. See, we didn't, I could have skipped that anyway. All right.
Mayor, if I may, we did have one written comment.
Perfect.
And that was from Mr. Gary Green, a Liberty Lake resident, who provided a written comment regarding the new stop sign on mission.
Thank you very much. All right, announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. We have first up Program Profile for Community Events. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you.
Think we have some slides.
So tonight I'm going to present on one of my department's programs, Program File for Community Events. Next slide, please. And as you can see, the numbers on the left kind of showing the value. On the right, it's a program that we believe is increasing in demand. There's a continual desire for more and more increasing attendance, increasing our opportunities for events. There is no mandate for it, but we feel like less than 50% of the population is benefiting. I think that we find that the majority of our event goers are actually probably from outside city limits. So that was, that was a pretty solid confirmation. There really is no cost recovery at this time on our community events and other entities could provide it if we so chose. Next slide, please. As the ranking for public safety, it's minor. It does contribute to an extreme quality of life and connectedness. There is some economic vibrancy in that very minor on planned growth and infrastructure and in the ranking of aligned and most aligned or less aligned, it's more aligned. Next slide, please. So we measure, we have the result, the result we desire is to increase participation and encourage event goers to attend our activities and the goal every year is to get more people involved. Our Community Satisfaction Survey, which I think is going to be addressed a little bit later, there's a question 21, if you're curious, you can look at that, look at that question, but that is sort of a driving force to support the fact that the numbers do increase each year. Looking at potential ways to track attendees, a little bit more concise than just by risk bands and tickets. So hopefully in the future, outlying years, we can find something that will help us actually count attendees on a more accurate basis. And then, of course, the fact that our events do contribute to the local economy, they supports our local businesses, they are active and involved in our events. Next slide, please. Are there any questions and comments? Yes.
Jen, I just want to reflect on the city's, I think, excellent work in partnering with community organizations. That the city has an amazing array of volunteers out there and can breathe life into these events with the people, I call it, to step forward volunteering and providing resources in terms of physical items that accompany it. So rather than us, you know, creating an enormous staff and an overhead layer, we're able to create an amazing number of events with the work and the help of our volunteers. So I'm grateful for the work of the city.
I agree. A huge, a huge reason we could pull these off is at the mercy of these volunteer groups. There's no way with our current staffing that we could do it and they are amazing to help us pull these events off. So yeah, thank you to them.
Councilmember Pro Tem.
Jen, what was the number of events just in the past year?
City sponsored or all, all events?
All events that you guys play some sort of role in?
So this is off the top of my head, it's not exact, but I want to say city sponsored events that we help organize and coordinate, probably about nine, 10? That might be a little much.
Sure, with 1.4 employees.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so if I can clarify, and if you were able to see the worksheets that go into making up all of those metrics, Jen and Ben, to their credits, have gone through their organizations and allocated every second of time into one of these programs. And so when you look at the worksheet, that 1.4 FTE is made up of about 20 people, right? They're allocated in different percentages. But to Councilmember Dunn's point, all of that workforce is supplemented by an additional group of volunteers that's not counted in that number that would make that go up to some number higher than that, obviously. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Great.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our Visit Spokane Quarterly Update. I don't see Rose.
Don't either. Evan, do we have Visit Spokane online?
Wish you were aware it started at six instead of seven.
Okidoki. Would you like, you want me to send her a quick text, Mark?
Sure.
Okay. Unless, hold on. Okay. All right, I'll do that after we get into, we'll go ahead and move up to the 2025 Community Satisfaction Survey. While Mark is presenting that, I'll shoot Rose the notes here.
All right, I think while Evan is queuing up that presentation, this is with great excitement that we get to talk about the results of this now, our second Community Satisfaction Survey. We tweaked the methodology a little bit this year with the hopes of boosting up the response rate. And so although we got more responses than we did last year, we didn't get as many as we hoped we would get. Nevertheless, we got real valid, meaningful data, which you'll see the results in the summary. And you all have, and there is a, for those in the audience, there is a draft version of the report in the packet. And so if you're interested in viewing that, and then the final version will be posted to the city's website. And so as we go through and talk about just in summary form, the 2025 results, I would encourage everybody to go through and look through the report and understand that the part of the reason why we did this earlier this year than we did last year was to use the results when we get to the budget making process. So they will help inform our development of the upcoming 2026 budget. So with that, Evan, if you would go to the first slide.
Mark, can I ask you a quick question before you start?
Yes, yes.
Is there a way for us to determine the, the people who are taking the survey? Is it, is it an anonymous, is it an anonymous setup? Or are we able to determine, you know, half of them are ones who have taken the survey every single year? Or, you know, they're always jumping online, taking the surveys and?
That's a good question. So let's, let's spend a minute talking about the methodology so that as we go through, that is not something that maybe everyone is wondering about. So this year, we changed the methodology a bit, again, to try to boost the response rate. So instead of sending a fixed number of invitations to the amount of households or the number of households that we needed in order to achieve statistical significance, which would have meant 100% of those would have needed to respond, and then reminding them multiple times. What we did is we broadened the invitation base. All of these are residents within the city or households within the city. And so last year, we invited 660 people to participate. This year, we invited something like 3,200 to participate. We only sent one invitation and it was online only, where last year was a paper version or an online version. And so through that method, we undoubtedly got some repeat answerers or respondents. We can go back and validate what address responded. We've tried to keep anonymity to the degree that we're not, you know, knowing who said X versus Y. But yes, we do know which addresses they were sent to and which addresses responded.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. So with this summary, I'm really going to keep it to the, limited to the questions that are directly tied to the strategic plan and the key findings or the key results, rather, in the strategic plan. And I'm also, as you can see, showing comparisons between the 2025 and the 2024 survey. We are also working on a report that will do this for every question asked and will provide those results as we do this survey in the out year. So you will see, as you see there, 26, 27 filled in as we go. So with the first question, overall, how satisfied do you feel about the quality of life in Liberty Lake? You see the results there and you see both years very high. 2024, you're in the 97th percentile of those that felt at least somewhat satisfied. And we're considering all of the green sections of the bar to be good. Obviously, extremely satisfied is more good than satisfied, which is more good than somewhat. It's the red sections that we're considering to be not good. And so when you look at that in perspective, we went from 97 to 99% essentially feeling at least somewhat satisfied year over year. Then if you go to question six, how safe do you feel in Liberty Lake? Again, we were in the 90, high 90th percentile, although we did see a lowering of that score overall. And you'll see some reasons why, as you go through the other questions in the, excuse me, in the survey. Evan, if you can go to the next slide, please. Question 10, overall, how prepared do you feel the city government is to respond to emergencies and natural disasters? And this is when you start to get into some of the questions where you get a significant number of I don't knows. And so that itself presents an opportunity to not only educate the public, but also do a better job of doing the thing so that people are less unknown or unsure about what their answer is when these kinds of questions are presented. But nevertheless, that, that somewhat prepared number went up from 24 to 25. And then question 13, how satisfied do you feel about your economic opportunities in Liberty Lake? And this question and the next one are going to become important when we get to the workshop later in the agenda. And you see there was some retraction. Now, it's interesting because you would expect that with some of the economic news that has been coming out over the last, say, 12 months and some of the uncertainty that's been projected. And so how do you feel about your opportunities right now? That number dropped significantly, as you see there. Now, if you go to the next slide, it's interesting when you ask a similar question about your, your, your opportunities in the next 12 months. That score actually rose. So how do you feel about it today? Less good than last year. How do you feel about it over the next 12 months? More good than last year. So the forecasting is better than last year, although the point in time is not as good. So some interesting findings there. Question 19, overall, how, how do you trust the Liberty Lake City Government? And that includes all of us. It includes staff, electeds, everyone to lead the city in the right direction. And you see that this score among all of the ties to the strategic plan was the most increased year over year, almost doubling from 22% saying yes and 24 to 43% and 25 with a significant number of don't knows. And then next, Evan. And these are the comparisons of the city services. And what I've done here is given you a peek at the top three good scoring services and the ones with the most significant number of below average or poor. And so you see those top three, which is park maintenance, community events, which Jen just gave you the profile on, and mowing received the most positive scores of all of the services that were listed. And then traffic management, planning and zoning, and council meetings gave the most negative scores. These were not the only items available to score. These are just the three with the most positive scores and the three with the most negative scores. And then in question 23, it's the same question, but it's about the services that are provided by other agencies. And you can see there's some overlap in these where drinking water, garbage, yard waste and recycling, and street lighting all received the highest number of positive scores. And then street lighting, I'm sorry, garbage, street lighting, and then internet and broadband all received the most negative scores. So you had two of the services receiving both the most positive scores and the most negative scores. So the least don't knows, which is interesting. So if you move to the next slide, Evan. Important question in my mind, which three items from that previous list of core city services do you think city leaders should pay most attention to over the next 12 months? And I gave you more than three, just to show you the, kind of the relative positioning of four and five. But you have law enforcement, planning and zoning, and street maintenance, followed by library and traffic management.
I think that traffic management being so low is very surprising.
Yeah, and I think, you know, there's, there's, if you compare it to some of these others, when you see, as you go through the report and see some of the open ended answers to some of those questions, you can see some of that context filling in as to why some of these are where they are. And then next slide, Evan, or to the questions and comments slide, Evan. That was the last slide on the presentation, but the report itself has much more in it, has all of the answers to the open ended questions to provide you those extra bits of context. Like I said, we're going to post this, the final version of the report online tomorrow, so anyone can see and dissect. We're always open and happy to answer questions about any finding that you want to talk about. Are there any questions that we can help answer now after seeing that summary?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Just real quick, Mark, can you remind everyone listening, how many people participated?
Yes, in 2025, we received responses from 226 households. And so if you look at it as, say, compared to a survey where you're getting responses from individuals, we have approximately, at the last census count, about 2.8 people per household. So those, those answers represent somewhere close to 700 folks, but 226 households.
Got it. I just think it's important, obviously, the, the data that's provided here is, is great, but I also think it's important to remember that it is 700 or 200, or whichever metric that we're using of the entire city. And B, you know, if we were to put this into kind of a, a public opinion survey, so to speak, our margin of error would be like 10% on something like this. So I, I think it's, it's, it's really valuable information, but I also think we have to remember the folks who don't necessarily participate in these surveys as well because either they're busy, you know, they're running their kids to soccer practice, whatever the case might be. They just now don't have time to participate in it. And, and their opinions matter too, but it's really, really difficult to get their opinions because, you know, no matter how many events that we do or town halls or community satisfaction surveys, they just don't, they don't chime in unless it's, you know, something hits them personally.
And that's a good point. It's always valuable to point out that this isn't the only measure that we need to be using. It's a tool, but it's not the only tool that we need to be using. So.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Kennedy.
You know, the last two years of doing this, we started first time last year. I'm sure some individuals would look at this and say, well, gee, was, you know, wasn't a lot of response. It'd be nice if we had more response. The good thing is we got response. And the most important thing is for all of us to realize that this, this is just another tool, as Mark just mentioned, that gives us something to base something on and how we can move forward. So I'm encouraged by this.
Councilmember Ball.
Well, I guess in response to what Councilmember Cargill said, how do we get more people to participate? I mean, is there, there's no magic elixir, you know, I mean, how, is there any suggestions that?
Well, I think one of the groups that we have that the council has commissioned, and I'm talking about the Community Engagement Commission, that's, that's their, that's their mission is to try to get a broader cross section of residents and folks that work here and visit here to participate in engagement of some kind. And so that's, that's what they're actively doing. Yes.
Anybody else? Councilmember Spencer, then Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you. I'll just make a couple of comments from, from the data. And, you know, one of these questions was brought up when Mark was going through the report. Question three, what one thing has the greatest positive impact on your quality of life in Liberty Lake? The top one at 33.3% was safety. The next, the next one was outdoor amenities that have that at 16.5. And then if we jump over to 22, which, which we looked at, the, the top three items that, that should receive the most attention from city leader, leaders over the next 12 months, law enforcement, planning and zoning, and street maintenance. And so, you know, we can interpret from that question three, safety, what that means. I suspect it has a lot to do with what law enforcement's doing and what our roads look like. How, how safe are people feeling that they navigate throughout the city or live and work here? So, so I'm encouraged by, by those things.
Councilmember Dunn.
I'm grateful for the data and I look forward to being able to reflect on it as we're making decisions about policy, to be able to use what has been responded by the people is what they think is important, what they're happy about and not so happy about. I'm grateful for the work and staff.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right, not hearing any. Next up, we have Rose Noble from Visit Spokane. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, good evening. Sorry I was a little late. I wish it was official Visit Spokane business, but it was official mom business transporting a child, a teenager from one place to another.
Most of us get that.
Yeah, he's, he's, he, we just need to get him a car. So we're there. Thank you for having me today. Just as a reminder, I've asked the council if I can present to you quarterly, just kind of an update on what Visit Spokane is doing. Last quarter, the end of last year, I was able to show you some very specific Liberty Lake deliverables. Today, we're just going to kind of give you an overview of Q1 of what Visit Spokane has done and then talk about a few things that are on schedule. So next slide. Next slide. Okay, just a real quick overview. We do have a membership platform. Of course, the reason I wanted to include this slide is to let you know that anybody that is a tourism facing business or has a tourism facing component actually does not pay membership into Visit Spokane, and that includes Liberty Lake. So with you partnering with us, anybody that offers something that a visitor, we can send a member of the public to go to, actually does not have to pay membership. We do offer sub tiered things for additional sales. It also don't really necessarily apply to Liberty Lake, but if a convention's coming in and there's a restaurant that maybe has a big group space, that would possibly be something that we would charge a membership fee for. But just to let you know, membership fees do cover us to be able to spend dollars a little bit more flexible. We are a 501(c)(6) that understands how to spend and operate with public dollars. So we are very transparent and our private dollars allow us to entertain and host and spend money on alcohol for meeting planners and such like that. So we're really happy to see that we had dues collected at 106,000 and that our renewal rate for our membership is actually 93%, which is great. And all of our hotels, we had 100% renewal rate for all of our hotels in the region. So that was awesome. Next slide. This is really cool. This is something that we just finalized. Bloom Day just happened. I just walked for the first time. I didn't do it last year, so I had a really good time. I heard Mayor was also there. It was lovely and we worked with the organizers of Bloom Day to create a Deals Pass that we launched on our platform. And this is something that we can definitely do for Liberty Lake, for businesses in Liberty Lake. But we are happy to have 24 businesses sign up for Bloom's deals. There are some in the valley on this account that were able to take part in the Bloom's Day. So what that means is businesses signed up to offer a discount or promotion for a certain amount of time and we push it through our channels. And also Bloom Day pushed it through their channels. We're going to, we're executing that May 1st through June 1st. So we'll have more numbers for you when that comes back. But I thought that was a pretty cool thing. It's the first time we've ever done it and we're looking forward to doing it again next year. Next slide. So we are also the official relocation guide distributor. This is a physical and digital piece. We're working on the updated 2025 piece. There will be more information about Liberty Lake in our 2025 piece. I can't wait to bring that for you. Probably by the next time I present, I'll have a hard copy for you. We are also having conversations with higher education and medical industry, just to see if there's other things that we can do to offer for relocation for employment when they're trying to recruit people into those spaces. So those are conversations we're having. But this is another avenue for us to, we do sell ads. We get a lot of realtors that like to have ads in here, as well as some of the more utilitarian things you could think of with relocation. And we're able to generate some private dollars through that. New this year, we actually have created a limited space for realtors. We have like an insert one sheet for anybody that wants to spend a little bit more. And for those realtors that don't necessarily want to place an ad, but still want to have a shipment of relocation guides and not have competition in it, the one shooter will just not be included. So any Liberty Lake real estate professionals can contact our office. We're happy to drop them off for them and they will, they won't have to worry about competition within the guide. So pretty cool piece. Next slide. Just an update, we have an event coming up in May. Every May, we have our Tourism Matters or Economic Impact Event. We've officially given it a name, Tourism Matters. We're actually celebrating National Travel and Tourism Week this week. So all week long, there are fun things that are USA Travel and our Brand USA and our Destinations International, and our Destinations International, which are all of our global and national associations, have some messaging for their members to push out to talk about the importance of tourism. We have an event coming up on May 29th. I believe the mayor's going to be there. I think also, Mark, we extended an invitation, but if any of the council members would like to attend, you can just reach out to us. It's where we will be launching all of our impact numbers for 2024. So we're hoping that it's, it's at least 1.5 billion in visitor spending or more, right? We don't want to see a decrease, and we'll have those numbers for you soon. And I know, I'm sure the mayor will, will report back, but I'm also happy to share our actual digital report with you as soon as we get that sometime in June. Yes.
So the 1.5 was what it was last year?
That was for 2023. Yep, for 2023. So we're, we, we don't unfortunately get our numbers until May of the following year that we're tracking, so, yeah. And then, new this year, we're partnering with the journal business to make sure that more of their readers understand the importance of tourism and the economic impact that visitor spending does bring to our area. We want to be at the table for all of the economic impact discussions. And, you know, it just takes certainly just to realize that there is a lot of jobs that are supported by tourism, and there's a lot of money that comes through visitor spending. It also offsets everyone in the Spokane County, 1.5 billion. That generated tax that offsets everybody's household taxes about $1,000. So, pretty good stuff. Next slide. Next slide, that's just a bigger version of our invite. Next slide. Okay, so here's just some general information on our website traffic. In 2024, we were super excited to see that we had 2 million website sessions, which is pretty awesome. The year-over-year increase compared to '23 is about 36%. Page views, you can see that we had 570,000 page views. And Things to Do page topped at our number one page next to our homepage. So those homepage things to do, and then Events Calendar is our third most visited. Actually, the Events Calendar for 2025 is showing as number two right now, which is a great reminder for anybody that you know in Liberty Lake that has an event that we might not have on our website, they can submit it onto our website. Of course, it has to be tourism-facing. We're not talking about fundraisers or galas. We're talking about an open event to the public. Even if it's ticketed, they can go onto our event calendar for free, as long as they follow some simple guidelines, no swearing, things like that. And that's really good promotion, because we get a lot of visitation to those pages. In addition, Cvent, that little note at the bottom, Cvent is what we use to help sell our hotels, mostly in the convention side. There are some properties in the valley that are using the Cvent as well. I don't believe any Liberty Lake lodging is using it, but this is kind of a necessary evil. We spend a lot of money with this company, but we kind of have to in order to be in the view of the meeting planners. So a lot of meeting planners are utilizing this software, they're logging in, and they're putting all of their RFP requests through the software, and we were happy to see that Cvent had a significant increase as well, and that RFPs were up. We had 363, I think, RFPs. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on. All right, next page. Quarter one so far, we are seeing traffic down on our website and our website sessions. We were like scratching our heads, and then we realized, oh yeah, this little thing called Expo 50 Celebration happened last year. And we had a lot of ARPA dollars that we were able to execute specifically for digital promotions of the Expo event, as well as a lot of general interest from the public on what this event was going to be bringing to the area. So we're continuing to track that. We have done an even more dataset drill down to show that it definitely is Expo-related into the influx of traffic that we had during Q1 and Q2 of 2024. Next page. On the horizon, some things happening coming out. We have some really great email newsletter partnerships with AMCI, which is a, a meetings group. We are actually hosting AMCI's annual conference next year in 2026. This is a really big deal for us. It's not a big deal in the amount of size of the group. It's about only 225 planners, but all of those planners actually represent dozens of other meetings that they can bring to Spokane. So it's, it's kind of like a site visit on steroids, and we're going to go all out. So we're starting with the email blast campaign, and we had a nice little launch back in February down in Tampa to announce that they were coming to Spokane in 2026. We're really excited about that. End of the year, in Q4, we're going to have a website, a new website, Look and Feel. It won't be too different to many of you. And I don't think many of you are probably on our site every day, but we're really excited about it internally, and especially on the backend. There's some new softwares and, and datasets we're going to be able to measure. It's going to make it easier for our team to execute, and it's going to look great. We have launched a few new videos related to convention and leisure and attendance promotion for convention. And we also have some new informational materials that help us sell the destination, like our airport one sheet and our convention one sheet. And then, coming up is a Makers Campaign, and then, of course, Liberty Lake Creative Assets. Thank you for approving some additional lodging tax dollars for us. We are excited to, I can't announce who it is yet, but we already did confirm today, a Liberty Lake maker. And what this means is, we have a program that we're building around artisans and makers that are from working and selling and creating in Spokane County that can help us tell the story of our innovative, innovative people that live here, and, and why Spokane is such a great region to live, work, play. So there will be some Liberty Lake makers in that program. It will include a lot of assets for them as well, to help sell their own business that we're going to do with our funding, and then it will look also great, integrated into all of our other digital programming. Next page. Lot of information on here, not going to really go over it. Just basic summary of this is, we had a lot of more, a lot more visitors this quarter one this year than we did last year, and that's due to us activating our visitor center crew and space a little bit better this year with the sports-aligned events that are happening in town, such as PNQ, which you're familiar with, as well as NCAA. This little thing called the NCAA tournament. So we set up some satellite kind of spaces to be able to hand out information to the visitors that are in town for those events. In addition, we have some patio activations that we are planning this year to have in the space at Riverfront Park. We're actually going to have live music before every summer pavilion concert with local artists, which is really cool. And then we have a few other activations that are attached to like Lilac Fest and the Pride Festival, and some other things happening downtown, just to make sure people are aware that we have a Visitor Services Center that can answer any of their questions once they're in the destination. Next page. Winter campaign. So last time I was here, I did show you a little bit of winter campaign, including Liberty Lake restaurant video that we were able to slice in, and beautiful imagery that we were able to capture of restaurants at Liberty Lake in this Makers Campaign. We're really pleased with this. Five million impressions. We had 443 people click on our actual ads. 437 of those clicks went directly to our site visits. Some of them went off to survey situation. And we're going to continue to run our All Around You theme. Now that we're in the spring, we've transitioned out of the winter campaign into Spring All Around You. That is a messaging and branding that we're able to tie to both meetings and leisure. When we talk about Liberty Lake, it does usually fall into the leisure bucket due to the lack of a convention hotel, but that doesn't mean that when we recruit a large convention, we can't sell Liberty Lake products in places to offsite meetings, or if we have a super large group and there needs to be overflow in your hotels. Next page. I'm going to skip through this. A lot of great PR mentions, but I think you all have this report, so you can click through those. We were happy to be on the cover of Meetings Magazine. It's a picture of Kendall Yards. Pretty cool. You can go to the next page. You can go to the next page, kind of talked about that already. Next page. All right, bookings here to date. So this is where we're seeing a slight, you know, I don't want to say concern, but we're just, we're monitoring. Q1 has not really gone really as strong as we would hoped. There's this little thing happening on the national level. You may or may not know of all these decisions coming down that are impacting how people feel about spending money, and that's, doesn't exclude traveling. We are tracking Canadian sentiment specifically. This region does receive a lot of Canadian visitors, especially in our peak season, which is the summer. So we're, we're seeing that that traffic is down. Actually, our website traffic, it's not included in this report, but it's down 82% from our Canadian visitors, which is interesting. We're also speaking with a few of the attractions located in Spokane that can track ticket sales and attach the zip codes and location, and we're compiling that information. That on top of just tariff talk and inflation and all of that, we're, we're seeing some of those things impacting. When it comes to meetings specifically, Visit Spokane, our, our, our convention in our space is really conducive to associations, as well as government contract groups, as well as science. We do a lot of science and education. And as you can imagine, science, education, and government groups are the three groups that pausing has been talked of, being, or funding is being talked of as being paused or removed. So there are a few groups that are maybe still kind of hanging on to their contract and not signing it, because they're waiting to see what's going to lie ahead for them when it comes to their funding. Did I explain that? Okay, okay. But we're, we're still optimistic. We're still pushing towards our goal, and I think we'll get it by the end of the year, just not as hard, not as good of a Q1 as possible. The next slide, you can go to. I'm not going to read this, but this is our revision and strategy to address some of the concerns we're seeing. So we're not completely pivoting away from our, our tactics. We're just switching up a few things to make sure that we are just aware of, of our scenarios and talking to as many meeting planners as we can that we know, as well as our colleagues across the nation know, and kind of tracking what, what they're seeing. In terms of the local efforts, we also have launched a Hometown Heroes campaign, which is anyone that is employed that is a part of an association that would maybe like to have their, their association travel to Spokane for once, so they don't have to leave. We would love to meet with you and tell you how we can work to make that happen. We work with groups of all sizes, so anything from like a corporate retreat to a large, you know, few thousand convention, we're happy to do. So you'll probably be receiving some information on that. We've started right now talking to Downtown Spokane Partnership, Board of Directors, as well as the GSI Board of Directors, to gather some information from colleagues that are attached to those memberships that might belong to associations on a national level. Next page. Okay, this is just these last two slides I always end with. Visit Spokane showcases destinations, full range of offerings, so we don't just do meetings and events. And that's very important for other people to know. Sometimes I think we get pigeonholed into that, but we talk about arts and culture, small business. We have some community engagement efforts that we do. I did hear you mention your Community Engagement Committee. We're really excited to have someone on our team who lives in Liberty Lake. Bethany is going to be moving into our partnership department, and we're going to designate her as a strategic partner with the City of Liberty Lake. So if there is an opportunity for us to have a presence at some of those community engagement discussions, she would be a great candidate, because she could keep us, keep each entity in the loop of kind of what's going on on a more regular basis. And then the next slide, this just kind of shows you all of those segments of tourism that kind of can fall under us and how we're happy to support many things.
I know. See, may I have any questions? Councilmember Ball?
Oh, yeah, Rose, just one question. All these makers, can it be any form of art or musical, like a name, sculpture?
Yeah, so we're, we're talking artisans, as well as people, product, as well as innovation. So, you know, it could be food and bev, it could be traditional art, paint, it could be manufacturing supplier, something like that. It, it has to be unique to the Spokane region.
Anybody else? All right, thanks so much for being here. Okay, next up, we have reports and inquiries. First up, we have city council reports. Does anybody have anything from the last couple of weeks? Councilmember Ball?
Okay, yeah, I have a lot, actually.
So you can get closer to your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. So on Earth Day, I went to Waste, well, now it's WM, formerly Waste Management's tour of their Smart Center out in, out by the airport. It was really impressive. Mark was there too. A lot of people were there, but the numbers are incredible. I mean, she may, Tammy may have presented this before, but they invested 18 million into this smart facility. And it serves 92,000 households, not all around here. They do go into Eastern Washington, Central Washington, Idaho. But the actual facility tour was fascinating. First, they have a conveyor belt that brings it all in. Your blue thing is dumped into it. From there, it goes to manual sorting. They have actual folks that get garbage out from what should, you know, that shouldn't be in there. Then from there, it goes into magnets. Huge magnets separate magnetic metals, while an Eddy current uses reverse magnetic force to separate the aluminum and non-magnetic metal. From there, it goes into these optical sorters, and then it goes to the little robots, and they spin. And for some reason, I, I don't know how, I mean, who knows how it works, you know, but they pick out whatever's left. And then, finally, it all goes into a baler. So they have these huge bales, and it's, it's all separated, cardboard, paper, cans. Like if you were a farmer, baling your hay, and then it gets hauled off from there. We are so lucky to have that. That's the only facility on this side of the Cascades that is like this. And I'm a big proponent of recycling, so I was, I was real excited to take this tour. I did ask about glass, which has always been a concern of mine, recycling glass. Asked Tammy again. There's no market for it around here. There is in Seattle, but it would cost more to truck the glass over to Seattle and have it processed there. But she said, it will come. It will come eventually. So that was encouraging for me. But anyway, if you guys get a chance, it's a little scary when you're in there, because you go up these metal stairs that you can see through, and there's all this stuff moving very quickly behind, underneath you. We had to wear hard hats. I dropped mine, or you probably saw it fell off my head. Anyway, yeah, it's a little terrifying, but it was, it was fun. Then, I also went to the ribbon cutting of the new Storage Solutions. Now, they're just outside of Liberty Lake. It's right on the border. They have a coffee shop there too. You probably have seen it, that new little white building.
Liberty Sips.
Liberty Sips, thank you. And so, I thought, well, I'll go to that. And that place is for a storage facility, fancy. Very well lit, 77,000 square feet. They have huge bays for RVs and, you know, trucks or whatever. And then, there's even storage upstairs. They have a lift to get it all up there. Additionally, upstairs, they gave me a tour, is a beautiful conference room, offices. I mean, for a storage facility, it looks nice. And the owners, it's Brian Layton and Brian Layton, father, son. It definitely, it very much is a family business. But it was interesting, because I asked Brian Jr., you know, there's so many storage facilities around here. How, how do you feel? Is this thing going to fill up? And his comment was, well, Post Falls is like in the top six in the nation for storage facilities. So, you know, we'll see, but there's a lot of them, but it's very, very nice. The two, the father and son are in charge of the storage facility, and the son and his wife are the coffee side. And they were doing free coffees, and they're very good. Okay, and one more thing, I've been busy. I also went to, I was invited by an old friend from Alaska, whose nephew and his wife are principals in the new theater they're trying to build, you know, in, in the Spokane Valley Performing Arts Center. Yes, it did kind of come to a halt due to loss of financing, but they have some new ideas on how to get that thing moving again. I really hope they can, because that's one of the few galas I've been to where the entertainment was some of the actors and performers. They are good. They were really, really good. It was a first-class event. So I copied some of these. I'll pass them around, but if anybody is interested or knows somebody that is, they can invest in the theater. So, anyway, I think that's everything.
Right. In the meantime, they perform. I think they're at University High School.
Yeah, and there's three shows this summer. Pirates of Penzance. I can't remember the other two, but anyway.
Are there any other council reports? Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, last Thursday, Mayor Chris and I were at the Liberty Lake PD at noon for an officer promotion ceremony. It was really great to be able to congratulate three officers in ascending steps in terms of the, the work in the police department. And then I also had a chance to hand off 100 pieces of chase from Paw Patrol, Stuffed Animal, a donation of Liberty Lake Kiwanis to the police department. I congratulated and thanked Chief Simmons for his outreach and efforts of engagement with the community, and specifically with youth. Every time there's a positive contact with youth and our officers, it empowers and creates trust and confidence, and that pays off in a lifetime. So great to be able to facilitate that, and great to see and learn more about the work of our officers.
Thank you. Now we have, uh, Councilmember Kurtz and Councilmember Kennedy.
I attended, thankfully, I'm thankful for the Waste Management event that the city helped put on with the bulky waste and clean green, and having goodwill there. It was very well-run, just like it has been every year. Signs were clearly marked. Everybody just huffed everything out, and we were out there in like four minutes with like a truckload of stuff. So thank you guys for doing that.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I was going to make reference to Brett's RV. This last Friday had their grand opening here within Liberty Lake. I was invited to that, unfortunately, I had a conflict at the last minute. I wasn't able to attend. I was disappointed that I wasn't able to do that. But I just want to say that I, I'm so appreciative that companies that have an interest of coming into Liberty Lake that they are. We, we really have an asset where we have raw land, we have businesses wanting to come in. But if you go by the Brett's setup there and look at that, that is a huge, huge financial commitment that they have done. And the RV business is one of those that not every- And the RV business is one of those that not everybody has one parked in their yard, like a car or something like that. And it could be tied to the economic uh, ups and downs. So having been in that industry, I look at what they've done and I'm so impressed that I went and toured the building, uh, looked at everything. And it's just a great facility for Liberty Lake, so I'm very pleased for them.
Councilmember Ball. Oh, and ask Mike, do they have storage there too, or they just sell RVs and boats?
Just sell at this point. They, if you buy, drive by their property, about half of their facility is still just raw dirt. They have some, uh, a lot of room for expansion.
Yeah. I bet they do offer storage eventually.
Anybody else? Alright, lots going on. Um, so from my side, um, Mark and I were able to attend the Brett's RV. I wanted to go back the next day for their big party. They had s- s'mores stationed and all that stuff, but we were able to go to the ribbon cutting. And it's, it's an amazing story. The, the company started in the sixties with um, mom and, mom and pop, you know, at a gas station. And somebody who saw their RV and they drove up and said, do, are you, do you rent RVs? And I said, no, well, you're going to. And it blossomed from there and they're getting ready to open, I think Pasco, I think as they said, is coming up in a week or so. They're opening there too. Um, so it was great. The owners were there, the owner and his, the two brothers, um, and they had several people relocate from other facilities to open this one. And yeah, I agree with Councilmember Kenny. It's a fir- first-class operation. Uh, I didn't get down there, but they built a dock, I heard, in, by their boat section. So when you go to look at the boats, you actually walk down and then step down into the boat like you would on a regular dock. Um, so I'm excited to have the boats here, um, because it's something that Liberty Lake doesn't have and so many boat owners here in Liberty Lake to have somebody this close to service them. So it's really exciting. Um, coming up again, plethora of, of alphabet soup meetings, SRTC board and administrative meeting. Um, Thursday night, the Spokane um, Home Builders Association is hosting a politics on tap. I've never been, been to that before, but I will report back. We'll see how that goes. Um, the Valley Chamber Public Safety Awards is coming up. Um, Lurie Lake, uh, Lurie Lake Regional Park Ribbon Cutting is on the twenty-first at eleven AM. Um, GSI Leadership Advisory Council is coming up. Um, and what I really want, I want to um, go off of something that Councilmember Dunn was saying about, you know, positive interactions with law, law enforcement. So um, a week or two ago, probably now, I don't know if you guys all saw, there was somebody doing donuts in the parking lot at Pavilion Park. Um, and um, they've, they've found the person, but, and I'm not going to share names. I talked to Chief Simmons about this. I wanted to recognize the two young girls who actually took the video and encouraged their grandfather to post it. Um, because it's an ongoing investigation, but Chief Simmons and I are actually going to, are arranging time to go uh, visit with those, those girls at their home and say thank you. Um, so it's, you know, to encourage our, our young, young, younger folks around here to, you know, speak up when they see something and say something and know that um, they're going to be rewarded and congratulated for it is, is fantastic. So um, that was a good ending to a bad situation. Um, and then just a reminder that the market starts on the seventeenth and we're looking for volunteers. Um, I can only be there from uh, nine to eleven on Sat, that Saturday. And there's nobody else signed up except for um, the Liberty Lake Better Together Foundation. So hopefully somebody can take the other shift. So it's out there. If you need the link, we'll resend it. And I think that's it for me. So we're up to Mark.
Mayor, I think we skipped over the ordinance review committee.
Okay. Sorry about that. Annie, Chris, which one of you, ordinance review committee?
Were you giving an update?
I was not planning to.
That's why nobody jumped up.
Yeah. Um, well, I, what I had hoped we were doing tonight was showing you guys the list of the ordinances and what status they are in. Um, but hopefully we can do that maybe the next meeting. Um, but we, I believe have concluded our work on it for, as a council, ad hoc group. Um, and then all the recommendations have been sent to Mark. Um, and we've gotten some of those responses back from staff about what's next for the different ordinances. Um, whether they're going to be repealed, whether they need to be updated, um, whether they need to, they're good the way they are. Um, so hopefully we'll have a, uh, an update when we meet next time, so you guys can see where things are at. Um, with the different ordinances and I don't have that document, so I'm just putting that out there that someone else got to do that. Um, and yeah, it'd be good to get the, get the project done, um, so that we can move through anything that needs to be repealed. Because I think we were on a good pace last year and then we, we a little stalled, but we're done. So.
Thanks for you guys for jumping back in and, and getting that pushed through. I really appreciate it.
So, who is, I'm, I'm not on the committee. So who is, who is responsible for delivering this report?
When you say reports, what uh, are you talking about the document that we were working off of? Or the report that's on the agenda?
Yeah, whatever, whatever is expected to be shared from the dais.
At the next meeting, is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Um, so we can, you've got, we've, we all have the link to the document, right? It's in our email, I think.
So I think that's been the rub, like there's an Excel spreadsheet out there that I don't have, that I've asked for a few times. And then there's the stuff that I've been sending. And it all needs to be collated by, I'm not sure whom, um, so that we can all just be aware of where the status of the ordinances are and hopefully tick through it over the next two months, so that all the work is done.
Kelsey had been the one that had uh, been sending us all the ordinances um, up until we got to the very end.
And then the mayor had the original Excel sheet.
So maybe we can, maybe we can get together, just do a quick teams meeting and figure out what the different pieces and then we can just pull it together pretty quick, I think.
Yeah, because I was sending like just emails and then I got an Excel sheet, part of an Excel sheet from you. So I think those two need to be collated together.
Well, you can send me what you've got, or you can send me what you've got, Mark, and then we'll coordinate it all. Sounds good.
But bottom line, there are probably I don't know. A dozen to twenty that we might have to make tweaks to on the language, give or take. But the rest either are no longer relevant, that we can just repeal altogether, or um, they need to stay in place.
Yeah, I think there's a couple that need a pretty big overhaul.
Yeah, and then there were a few that, um, depending on the timeline, um, as Lisa had mentioned, there's natural processes for those to get updated. But um, we, we're going to get rid of the tape players in the car, like the, some of the really outdated language.
Oh, I still have a cassette player in my, in my car.
Well, don't play it too loud.
Okay. Alright, thanks guys.
Sorry for whatever miscommunication there was there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it straight. Are we up to city administrator?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, members of council, um, our guests this evening, both online and here in person. Um, if you look through and we've got it up on the screen, uh, just a couple of reminders. Uh, the twenty-twenty-five City Academy is ongoing. We've had a couple of sessions already. Between tonight and our next meeting, we will have uh, two more on Thursday, May eighth and May fifteenth. Uh, these start at six PM. You're welcome to join us if either of these topics interest you and you want to learn more about them. On May eighth, this coming Thursday, day after tomorrow, we'll be at the uh, municipal library. And then the following Thursday, we will be here at City Hall to learn about zoning and growth. And if you think back to the presentation that we just had on the survey, uh, that might be one that uh, folks want to come and, and listen to more uh, from the staff's perspective of what happens there. So uh, consider that. Uh, candidate filing deadline is Friday, May ninth. Uh, it opened this past week, so um, if you're interested in getting on the ballot for one of the local elections, um, you have until Friday, May the ninth. Uh, just pointing out that uh, Sunday, this past, uh, I'm sorry, this future Sunday, um, starting um, on Sunday is National Police Week. We don't have in the city any specific events planned, but just keep that in mind. You'll see some, I'm sure, information circulated uh, maybe by our um, police um, foundation or some other groups. Um, but it is National Police Week coming up. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, the farmer's market starts uh, in a couple of Saturdays on the seventeenth. Um, and then beyond that, um, and this is one that you'll be hearing more about from us as we get closer. Uh, National Public Works Week, um, will take some time to kind of talk about what public works is, who does it, why it's important, those kinds of things. Um, and then finally, we've settled on a date for the Winter Glow Town Hall, or the Town Hall with a Winter Glow theme is probably more appropriate uh, description. It's going to be Monday, June second. We weren't able to get it in front of Memorial Day, but we got it as close as we could. Um, and it's going to be over in the Trailhead Rotary Room. Um, and so we'll get information out and circulated about um, where that is, when it is, why it's important to be part of that discussion.
Time on that, Mark?
It's going to be at six PM.
Yes. And Mark, are, are you expecting the council, all the council to be participating? Is it just part of the council? Is it just the Community Engagement Commission? Is it just the Winter Glow folks?
Great question. I'm glad that you asked that, because I wanted to get some feedback from the council. We had talked about at the sort of uh, the workshop between the council and the Community Engagement Commission. Whether this kind of conversation in particular needed the full council, um, I'm, I'm not saying it does or it doesn't. We have an agenda, but the agenda is not going to be in the similar style as the previous Town Hall where we have a panel discussion. This is going to be more a dialogue where we're getting feedback from individuals in the community about this topic. And so obviously, council members are part of that discussion, and so we would obviously like you to attend. Whether you believe the entire body needs to be there as a scheduled council meeting, I think is up to the council. Um, the Community Engagement Commission is going to be participating. Members of the Parks and Arts Commission will be participating. Staff will be participating and we'd love to have as many members of council there um, as we can to help with the conversation.
Remind you, Mark, with respect to public noticing, um, we can public notice this, um, that gives the opportunity for more than uh, you know, for council members to attend.
Correct.
I just want to make clear, yeah, I don't feel that it should be pub, you know, noticed as a council meeting per se, but just create the opportunity for um, let's say, a majority of the council members to attend.
Yeah, we don't want to prohibit more than four from attending, is the, I think the key. Yeah.
I appreciate that.
And so we still have several weeks prior to this and we'll be getting some, some more information, but essentially um, and, and this is subject to change as these plans get solidified. But we're looking for input primarily on whether the community wants to see Winter Glow as it's currently produced continue. Um, and if the answer to that is yes, generally, what, what is the scale and, and cost that kind of support that? And if the answer to that first question is no, what are some alternatives that they may be interested in considering? And so that's really the discussion that we're planning for that Town Hall event. So keep that in mind as well. Any other questions about these reminders before we move on? Alright, um, I guess, uh, let's see, let me, let me go through the, the stats here for the twenty-twenty-five legislative wrap-up and then we'll call um, Louis up and, and read a letter of appreciation for his effort in this um, legislative session on our behalf. But if you look at the stat report that uh, the legislature publishes in this session, twenty-twenty-five, which was a long session, a hundred and five-day session. Um, there were twenty-three hundred and eighty-seven bills filed. Um, and as we kind of looked through those and we, there's no way we looked at each individual bill. But of the ones that we identified as being aligned specifically with the legislative priorities that the council adopted back in January, or back in December, excuse me. Um, we were specifically following seventy-seven of those bills as ones that impacted one of those priorities. And, and like I said, there were more that we didn't identify. Um, but these are the groupings, or, or the group of bills that we were specifically following. And of those seventy-seven, uh, we were opposed to nine. We supported twenty-eight and we were uh, watching forty of them. As of today, waiting for the governor either to sign veto or not sign, in which case these would become law. There are fourteen of those seventy-seven still alive that have been passed by the legislature. And of those fourteen, we, two of them we oppose, seven of them we support and five of them we call watch. And so it's, it's interesting that some of the things that we uh, you know, supported that immediately fell out of the consideration were things like mandatory sentencing for fentanyl possession and distribution. Right? That didn't even get a hearing. And there were a handful of those bills um, that were all on our list that never made it past the first gate. Um, and so stuff like that, um, you, you, you saw. There were a lot of interesting land use bills uh, that made their way through, lots of parking-related things um, that we'll have to um, respond to in our community development department. Um, lots of, obviously, bud, the budget was an interesting topic, uh, particularly as it related to the capital side. We all heard um, about the deficit situation that the state was facing, is facing, and attempted to close with this budget process. Um, that, you know, there were, the, the budget went down to the wire. There was no special session. Um, but um, we're in a position now where the legislature uh, is, the session is ended. Um, and depending on what the governor does uh, with these pieces that are on his desk, um, we'll see what the impact is to the city of not only these that we were watching, but all of the other things that were out there. And so with that, we had the opportunity to be supported in this effort this year um, by some volunteer help. Um, Louis Beck, who's sitting right over here, raise your hand, Louis. You all met Louis earlier in the session. Louis is a lawsuit in Gonzaga, um, offered to help us out in this. And so without, without Louis's help, we would not have been able to follow these as closely um, as we were able to and provide some of the analysis um, that we were able to provide. Um, and even identifying opportunities to testify in certain committees on certain bills. Uh, all because of the time and energy and effort that Louis contributed. Um, and so because of that, we want to uh, read a letter of appreciation to Louis um, and take a photo and thank him for uh, just being part of the session on our behalf and the time he spent doing that. So um, Mayor, do you want to pass that down? Do you want to read it?
If you'd like.
Go for it.
Okay. Dear Louis, on behalf of the city of Liberty Lake, we want to sincerely thank you for volunteering your time and energy to assist the city during the twenty-twenty-five state legislative session. For cities like Liberty Lake, contributions from volunteers often make the difference between achieving an important goal and uncertainty. That is certainly true here, as two thousand three hundred eighty-seven bills were filed during the one hundred and five-day session. Your skills and expertise helped identify bills that aligned with our legislative priorities, track them through the process, analyze potential impacts and target opportunities for communit, committee testimony. As the true impact of new laws becomes evident in the coming months, your contributions during the session will become magnified in value. We hope this experience helps to forge a more thorough appreciation of local governments as you continue support, continue pursuing your juris doctorate and consider future career opportunities. Thank you again for your service to the city of Liberty Lake and its residents.
Thanks.
I just want to say, Louis was the only one that amiserated with me when my team lost the final in the NCAA tournament. Even though my team had beat his team earlier in the tournament, so for that.
I'm sorry, what is your point?
I, I was just, I, I was just wanting to take the opportunity to get that off my chest. Alright, uh, we've got a briefing about uh, political signs uh, and how they relate to our code. Yes, sir.
Real quick on the legislative session before we move on, did the library grant come through?
So, great question. In the capital budget, uh, as you remember us talking about, there was a, a ten million dollar series of recommendations. The, the legislature awarded six and a half million of that ten. Ours was not awarded. Um, and so, um, what is that? Three and a half million of the ten million was not awarded.
Got it.
And, and ours was among the three and a half not awarded. And so Lisa is going to remind everyone what the rules within our code are with respect to political signs as we're entering that season. Lisa, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a little public service announcement, uh, kind of timely, given that uh, candidate filings are due at the end of the week. And so just wanted to remind everyone of the rules of engagement related to political signs and hopefully avoid some of the challenges that we've had in the past. Next slide, please. So first, I want to talk about what is allowed. Um, so political signs are temporary signs allowed in all zones. Uh, we don't really ask for a uh, a temporary sign permit specifically because it would be an impossible task to administer. We don't really ask for a, a temporary sign permit specifically because it would be an impossible task to administer. Political signs are allowed on private property and that includes HOA properties. If you have the permission of the property owner, the city will not get involved in political signs on private property. So if you have a beef with the property owner, talk to the property owner. Or if you think, or if you as a property owner haven't given permission, talk to the candidate. There is no number, size or material restrictions on political signs. And they may remain in place until 14 days following the general election. Or in the case of a runoff election, 14 days after the runoff, runoff election. Now let's talk about where they're not allowed. Next slide, please. Political signs are prohibited on all public property. Public parks and facilities, public easements, public right of way, including medians, roundabouts and roadside swales. And just, just for the record, political signs that are placed in the public right of way create a real operational headache for our hardworking maintenance crews. Next slide, please. So again, just some examples, not in medians, not in the grassy swale between the sidewalk and, and the, the curb. Next slide, please. So one of the things, so this is, this is, I want to go through a series of where we have the most problems with political signs. First of all, this is an insider hack. Look at Scout to find out where the property or where the right of way line is before you place your signs. We have so much variability. This is a big one. This is on Mission Avenue in Multer. We have such a huge right of way that it, it's very, this is an area where we constantly have complaints. Next slide, please. Here's another one. This is on the corner of Liberty Lake Road and, and Appleway. And there is, again, all those street trees are within the public right of way. Next slide, please. Another frequent flyer on both sides of the trail, the Simpson Trail that ties into the Centennial Trail off of Appleway Avenue. This is one where we have a lot of problems with political signs. People want to think that it's, it's an okay place, but there, but that is public right of way. Next slide, please. Another area that we commonly have problems are on the off ramp, the eastbound off ramp. And both the section that is at the county, that's public property, it's public right of way. And the section that is owned by Washed Up, in both cases, those are prohibited. Next slide, please. And also on Appleway Avenue, this, this is adjacent to the Huntwood property. There's a pretty good area of public right of way between the Huntwood property and the edge of curb. So again, this is where we commonly see some problems. And one of our last problem areas, next slide, please, is at the eastern terminus of the sidewalk at, at Meadowwood Tech Campus. We've got that open property that doesn't, that, that where the sidewalk ends, there's still a pretty big swath of right of way. Again, private property is great. But please, if you, if, if you would check in advance, be kind to your maintenance workers and to your code enforcement people. And just check first before you put your signs out. We'd really appreciate the efforts.
Lisa, quick question. People have asked me, so I've got a sidewalk in front of my house, people across the street don't. The, the area between my sidewalk and the street.
It depends in some cases, and that's why you have to check Scout. It really depends. In some cases, that's, that area between the sidewalk and the curb is public right of way. In other cases, it's not. And right now, I'm going to go to the next slide because I really want to, I really want to talk about our protocols. So th- these are the protocols we follow with code enforcement. Signs on public property will be removed. The signs can be picked up. They'll be available for pickup at City Hall. Generally in the, in the enclosure for the dumpster that's in front of the maintenance building. Campaign signs will be, there are the campaign email will be notified that a sign has been removed and the candidates can come to pick them up at City Hall. Signs not picked up by the date of the election will be disposed of. And the city is not responsible for other candidates removing signs from the dumpster area. So if you get a call, you might want to be quick because your competitor may be wanting to pick up your sign before you do. I will say one other thing, and that is our sign code is going to change. We have been consistent in the way we enforce sign code. There is case law about not enforcing your sign code. So we have been, we don't want to be arbitrary and capricious. We're in the process, we're, we're in the sausage making right now for the sign code. We are hoping to have the hearing before Planning Commission in September. That means you're not going to really hear it until October. You're not, and, and so bottom line is that we have to, we have to suffer through this sign code for one more season. And, and we will update you as I know exactly what it looks like. There's some challenges with some of the, with some of the, the case law in terms of how we make it work with the city aesthetic. And so, so we, I will say just as a side note that starting May 15th, we're going to have a, a virtual online sign code town hall and visual preferencing survey to get some feedback from the public before we kind of put the final working draft together for the Planning Commission. So look for that. We will be advertising it. We'd love to get your feedback on that. We'd love to get the feedback of the public on that. We think that that's an important aspect of updating the sign code. But in the meantime, we ask that you just bear with us for one more year.
Any questions?
Questions?
Councilmember Spencer.
Thanks, Lisa. I know this has been a real fun topic. I think one thing that could be really helpful here would be if we can have this, this clip from what you just spoke about sent to all the candidates who may be contemplating putting signs in Liberty Lake. It would have been really helpful, you know, when I ran my campaign. So I, I, I think that would be really helpful.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. We will absolutely do that.
Councilmember Curtis from Kennedy.
And I just wanted to concur with Councilmember Spencer. We were talking about this last week or the week before. And I think that there's just, the education piece is really important. So any, anybody like any county, any school board, any, anybody who might put a sign here, just from an educational thing of some tips and just to let you, let them know that you're going to be enforcing them. And whoever's putting up your signs, make sure they know it because I think that that would have been helpful for all of us. Because I think I can, I know all those locations. So, yeah.
No names on any of the locations.
I believe it's also important that anybody running any candidates are aware, if they put their sign in a right of way where it's not allowed and the city picks it up, don't come to the city for damage. Because some of the signs are very large and they get damaged in the traffic, you know, in the back of the truck. And it's not, in far as I'm concerned, it should not be the city's responsibility that refund them for any of that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lisa.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Last topic on, on my report is just a quick mention of the public safety sales tax. Some of you may have seen that the City of Spokane Valley is getting ready to queue up a ballot measure in August for the public safety sales tax to have a city levied 0.1% that they will take to the voters. We're, we're, we're not going to discuss strategy tonight. I just wanted simply to point out, number one, that the City of Spokane Valley is putting this on the ballot. If you'll recall, a year or so ago, Spokane County put a measure on the ballot and is planning to put another measure on the ballot in November of 2026 to levy a public safety sales tax under this section of the RCW, which is chapter 82 dot 14, which allows them to levy up to 0.3 cents. Capped at 0.3. The, the, the risk here is if the county goes up to 0.3, our residents would be paying that rate, but we would only receive a prorated share of 40% of that revenue. On the other hand, if, if the city and the cities are capped at levying 0.1%, if the city before the county levies a 0.1% sales tax, 85% of that revenue comes back to the city and 15% goes to the county. And so there's some justification for having a discussion, getting ready for the fact that, number one, City of Spokane Valley is getting, is, is putting a measure on the ballot to levy that 0.1%. And we understand that the county is preparing to come back in November of 2026 to levy the point, at least the 0.2%, possibly 0.3. So all of that to say, at some point in the, in the near future, we will schedule a workshop or workshops to discuss how we might, as a city council, approach that topic. So any immediate questions that we can help answer?
It's a sales tax? Is that what you said?
It is a, it is a public safety sales tax. So it is designa-, it's revenue designated to go towards certain public safety functions. But it, cities are allowed to levy under this provision of RCW up to 0.1%.
Any other questions?
So that concludes my report, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Dr.
Next up, we have Liberty Lake Swinwater District. Do we have anybody online? No? Okay. Somebody happens to join, we will let them speak up. Now we are up to 11A, our workshop on economic development strategy.
Before we start getting into this, Evan, do you see our guest online? All right, awesome. So we'll have a guest at some point that I'll introduce and allow him to, and, and we've given him strict instructions to limit this to seven minutes, right? So he's already been briefed on that. So if we can pull up the presentation, Evan, mine might take a few minutes longer than that, but not, not much more than that. So we've had some discussions about economic development in, in the recent past. And if I recall the discussion during the budget development for the 2025 budget, one of the, one of the requests of staff was to bring back some options for handling economic development activities that were at one point covered under the Economic Development Services Package that was part of our GSI agreement. And so in contemplating how that would best be implemented or incorporated into what the city currently does for economic development, we wanted to have a discussion here that isn't proposing strategy right now, but proposing developing strategy with certain frameworks that consider what we currently have in place with both our strategic plan and our comprehensive plan. And so with that, Evan, if you go to the next slide, we'll, we'll talk about what some of those look like. And so we, we have an opportunity really, I think, to talk about in our maturation as a city. We're, we're a growing city and we've talked about the estimated build out population to be somewhere between 21 and 22,000, and that could change as estimates change. But that means that from today to build out, we're going to grow another 50-ish percent. You, you've all seen, and there, and there's one behind Councilmember Curtis, and you've all seen the maps as Lisa presents certain aspects of the comprehensive plan annually that we have large commercial tracks fronting I-90 and Appleway and Country Vista. And so those eventually will be filled in. And so as the city is preparing to develop its next comprehensive plan, which is underway, we've talked about that in various meetings. We've already adopted a strategic plan. We talked not too long ago about a capital investment strategy. And so with, with all of those things out there, it, it's time to start specifically talking about what framework the council wants to build for an economic development, a deliberate, purposeful economic development strategy. And so that's kind of what I want to walk you through this evening. If, if you'll remember back to the survey discussion that we just discussed, we had a couple of questions specifically related to some key results that are tied to that economic vibrancy and opportunity priority that's part of our strategic plan. I just mentioned the capital investment strategy. And then if you go into our comprehensive plan, our current comprehensive plan in chapter 10, and this will also be chapter 10 in the updated version. But you'll see things in the policy statements like, and this is policy number one, prepare and implement a local development strategy, local economic development strategy in consultation with local businesses, regional economic development organizations, property owners and residents. And so that, that is a policy that up to now, we haven't done in a organized, purposeful way. And so that's essentially what we're proposing that we do is we need to schedule some time as a body to get together and start preparing and implementing that local economic development strategy. If you look at all of the regional partners that are not only identified in our comprehensive plan, but just the ones that we work with routinely, Rose, is Rose still here? Rose is here from Visit Spokane. I would include that in this, in the, in the other portion of this, although it's not called out specifically. But we work with Greater Spokane, Greater Spokane Valley Chamber. The, the school district is going to play a major role in this as the educator of the workforce and so forth. And so it's, it's bringing all of those in, in addition to the local businesses and the local resident population to understand what it is that we want to focus on and develop as that economic development strategy. Next slide, Evan. And so I just want to talk about some data here that may help put this into kind of context here. We, we have sales and use tax and we just talked about a possible provision or a possible ballot measure that Spokane Valley is considering. But if you look at our sales and use tax growth between 2013 and 2024, and these are actual numbers. These aren't budget numbers. These are actual revenues. You see the pieces that make up the sales and use tax family. And then with 2024, that red piece of the bar on top is the, the Transportation Benefit District, 0.1% that council authorized last year. And you see the impact that that's had in 2024 and we would expect that to continue as we move forward. And so we have a sales and use tax base that's growing. This is the single largest element of our tax revenue overall, right? And so this is what we would expect to see affected by implementing an economic development strategy. If you go to the next slide, please. And Rose will take particular interest in this. This is the family of things that are, that fit in the tourism tax. Now I've also included in here our admissions tax because in, in effect, that's a tourism tax for admission to the county golf courses. Does that get levied at Trailhead, Kyle? And, and also at Trailhead. So you see the impact of the revenues that we consider tourism tax there. And we'll talk a little bit more about this. These are at a different scale. These are in the neighborhood of 400,000-ish a year. So it's less than sales and use tax. But this is something that we can see possibly putting some policies in place to try to boost, right? This is an area where we have some opportunity. If we can go to the next slide. If we look at it from a budget perspective, we've talked about this with the development of the priority based budget. Chief Simmons has come at least once to talk about the crime prevention program in the budget. You heard Jen tonight talk about the community events program. We also have one called the Economic Development Program. And you can see from a budget perspective, these, these are expenditures. So all of the public safety programs combined, there's about a dozen of them, add up to about 6.2 million in the 2025 budget. When you compare that to the Economic Development Program, and there's only one, there's a single economic development program. It's budgeted at 900,000, of which 795,000 are passed through dollars that are in that collection of tax revenues that we just saw. Most of those are passed through the city. Most of those are passed through the city, um, to other organizations. And so you see the difference in budget for public safety versus economic development. Uh, Evan, next slide, please. If you remember the. Survey data that we looked at earlier and you, uh, see the two questions that are related specifically to economic opportunities. Um, and compare that with the one related or one of the ones related to safety. You see that safety is in the ninety-ninth percentile, ninety-seventh percentile this year, ninety-ninth last year. Um, we have far less certainty in the economic developments or the economy side, the economic opportunity side. And so a greater number of, uh, a greater percentage of folks that responded to our survey feel. Safe than feel satisfied with current economic opportunities or optimistic with future economic opportunities. So there's some opportunity there to start closing that gap. Uh, Evan, if you go to the next slide. And so one of the other things that I specifically wanted to point out in a proposal that's now going, making its way through. Uh, the Planning Commission for Possible Inclusion in the Update to the Comprehensive Plan is Policy Number Twenty. Um, in Chapter Ten, um, which is talking essentially about data-driven decision-making, right? We want to use current relevant data to help whatever we're going to do. Um, whether that's in retrospect to support decisions that we've already made or to inform potential decisions or areas of. Opportunity that we want to explore or, uh, looking at it as a warning to, hey, maybe not go down this path or something like that. But regardless, we're talking, um, wanting to include a data-driven strategy as part of the economic development strategy overall. And so next slide, Evan. And so, sorry, go back one, I don't want to get there yet. So with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to invite, uh, Ganon to join us. Ganon is from an outfit called Placer AI. I'm not going to tell you much about what he's going to talk about because I want him to do that. But I'll reiterate that Ganon has been briefed by penalty of being cut off by Evan, that he's got seven minutes here. Now, if you want to ask questions beyond that, feel free to take as much time as you want. But with that, I'll invite Ganon to take over the screen and start his presentation.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it. I, uh, timed my presentation early and it was under seven minutes, so I will do my best to keep it there tonight. Council and Mayor, thank you so much for, for including me here and let me be part of this, our presentation. I'm going to share my screen real quick. Let me know when it is up and visible to everyone.
You're good to go.
Excellent, thank you so much. So as Mark mentioned, I am with Placer AI and I work with our Pacific Northwest region specifically with our civic customers. So if you don't know about Placer, Placer is a location analytics platform. That can provide anonymized macro level data on any property or location in the United States. Um, so as a business, we have two pillars that we focus on. Uh, the first is privacy and the second is accuracy. Now talk a little bit about both. But first, we source our data by partnering with third-party mobile applications. Uh, that require users to opt-in for location sharing. So if you've ever downloaded an app on your phone and it asks if they could use your location, you have opted into location sharing. Through these partners, we have a sample size of nearly thirty million mobile devices in the United States. So that's just shy of ten percent of every mobile device in the U.S. is within our sample size, making our data statistically significant. So it's important to note that privacy piece that our partners are contractually obligated to scrub. All personal identifiable information or PII away from their data before it even comes through our door. So a good way to think about that is if, uh, you know, someone offered me a million dollars to use Placer to find an address, I simply couldn't do it. It's not how our platform works. All we are receiving is latitude, longitude and timestamps, again, on a macro aggregated anonymous level. From there, we take that data, we plug it into our proprietary algorithm. And we can get various insights on any physical location in the United States. Uh, we also work with private sector customers, so we have the ability to test our data and our data comes out. Uh, consistently between ninety-two and ninety-eight percent accurate. As I mentioned, we, um. As I mentioned, we, we came in the market as sort of a commercial real estate and retail focused company, but we found out really quickly that. Our biggest opportunity was with, with what we call our civic vertical. So I only work with cities, counties, DMOs, parks organizations, EDOs, um, you name it. So there are typically nine or ten ways that we work with our civic leaders and you can see this up on the screen. The tenth way, um, that's not on the screen here is that we're great with helping with grant writing. Um, but we can do a lot with economic development, like helping retail analysis and recruiting new businesses. Supporting local businesses, helping with workforce attraction and business attraction. As well as sales tax estimation. I also heard a note earlier in the meeting that, um, about some great events that the city is putting on. We work a lot with, uh, event analysis and helping understand, you know, how much attendance is coming to an event. We also do quite a bit of work of, with understanding, uh, travel and tourism and just overall who is coming into the city. So I'm going to pull up and show you just some samples of what a property report looks like with us. And use your Hub Sports Center as an example. So this is sort of the, the frontline, uh, most boiled down view of our data. But I can see that over a twelve-month period, um, the Hub Sports Center got sixty-seven thousand and change unique visitors. That visited a total of two hundred and three thousand times. So on average, the people that were going there were going about three times per person. And then we can see our visit trends here, which shows visitation over time. So we can see those spikes and those dips. So back to that sort of event analysis thing, we can see here by looking at the Hub Sports Center. You know, which weekends had tournaments and which weekends had events, um, compared to sort of the, the slower periods. We can also go a little bit deeper and show, first of all, where these visitors are coming from. So using our algorithm, we can get a gen- general idea of the, you know, surrounding home locations of some of these mobile devices. Um, down to a zip code or a census block level. Um, so we can answer the question with this heat map you're seeing on the top. Where are people coming from that are going to the Hub Sports Center? Um, so we can see obviously the local population draws in a lot of visitation, but you're also getting some people crossing state lines from Idaho and Montana. As well as coming from the west, uh, western side of the state. That answers where people are coming from. We can also answer where else they are going when they're in the city. So I can see that generally about three and a half percent of people left the Hub Sports Center and went to Wendy's right afterwards. Um, so we can, it helps us understand the general impact economics, economically speaking, um, of a specific location. Uh, that we are now analyzing. Uh, last week, we also updated our platform to be more friendly for our city customers. And launched our new markets update, so I can analyze the city of Liberty Lake as a whole. And provide things like the top visited locations within the market. I can also filter this out to show top locations outside of the market. So we can get an idea of what your residents are leaving Liberty Lake to spend their money on. Um, to give you an idea of what they're already interested in and sort of show you that leakage. Um, we can also use these new reports to show demographic breakdowns of visitors, residents, out-of-market employees, out-of-market visitors. Um, and the like. So I'm really just kind of scratching the surface because I'm, I promised I'd keep this to a really short, um, presentation. But we do work with, like I said, lots of cities, including Fox Lake, Illinois. Uh, we were recently able to help them attract over three hundred and thirty-five million new developments to their city. So we were able to do this by showing them different data and helping them do retail recruitment and understand sort of the gaps in their city's offering. Um, so very quick presentation, I'm just scratching the surface here, but, um. That, that concludes what I wanted to show you today and I appreciate your time and happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you.
And, and so we realize that you haven't seen a lot, um, but the, the hub example. Thinking back to some conversations that we've had in the recent past. All of those exits are going to non-Liberty Lake businesses. And, and that's one example that we're seeing, um, from just a, a scratching of the surface of, of this kind of tool. And so, um, feel free to ask Ganon any other questions. But I, I just want you to know that th- this is just, I mean, we're, we're barely scratching the surface of a large area here. In, in the presentation.
Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, thank you, um, so I'm curious, uh, assuming we were to utilize this software. Is, is it something where city staff is able to run these ad hoc reports? Or is this something we have to ask you guys every time, uh, to develop a report?
That's a fantastic question. So we are a web-based software platform, uh, you will get access to the entire city, so anyone working within the city will get access. The one caveat is we do not work with law enforcement or fire departments, but beyond that, uh, anyone with the Liberty Lake. Um, email address is, is included in the, the subscription. Um, we also have a team of support that will work with you. So myself included plus a customer success agent, uh, will be on your team to either take weekly meetings and train you on the platform. Or just give you a login and, and, you know, use the platform as you will. Um, we are a very customer-centric company, so we put a lot of resources into making sure that you guys. Get wins and we are actually metric internally as a team on, um, how quickly we are able to help you accomplish, uh, project that you are working on as a city. So it's very important to us, we call it our small win metric. Um, we, we work with you, you can tell us to leave and, and we can talk to you once a year. Or you can, uh, work with us and we'll, we'll do weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings as, as frequently as you want. And make sure you're empowered and, and learn how to use the tool as a, as a city.
Follow-up, yeah.
A follow-up question, so, um, are, are we able to use this information as a city however we like? I mean, is it something we're able to offer this as a service to the local businesses as far as. Uh, in helping them develop their marketing strategy and, uh, determining, you know, where people are going, coming, that sort of thing?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. Um, you know, there are some within reason legal limitations as far as, you know, what, what our contract allows. Uh, for example, we, we wouldn't, you know, um, want you to be giving access directly to your local businesses. But supporting local businesses is a major, major thing that we do and that we try to accomplish here. I work with chambers and, um, downtown associations all the time. That's all they care about is working with their local businesses. So providing them with information, giving them an idea of, you know, how far people are traveling to, to get to their restaurant or. Or understanding sort of the demographic breakdown of their customers, um, absolutely something that we encourage.
And if I can help answer, I, and obviously this would have to be developed in the strategy that I'm proposing that we think about. But I, I see the city kind of positioning itself as a business services, an economic development services. Agency with, with folks, city employees, uh, doing work to help support targeted. Strategic efforts to grow, expand, attract. And as you saw some of the, um, presentation earlier, this, this goes outside of private business. We're, we're now in, you know, what, what is this doing for events? We, we talked about winter glow earlier. What, what economic impact are things like that having on our community? And how can we make some decisions that help keep some of that business inside the city versus it spilling out to other places?
Other questions? Councilmember Ball?
Well, obviously there's a cost for this, right?
There is, yes.
You know what it is?
It, it is comparable to the amount that we were paying for the GSI Economic Development Services Package. But the plan is to bring you back a license agreement with a authorization to move forward. And so between now and then, we'll have the exact cost. It, it's comparable to the, it's somewhere between fifteen and seventeen thousand, which is comparable to the GSI. Uh, budget that we previously built into the annual budget.
So that, that fifteen to seventeen is on an annual basis?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so then we would get rid of GSI?
We've already done that.
Okay, oh, that's right.
Yes.
I get it mixed up with the other one.
And I'm not suggesting that this replaces that, I'm just as a, as a balancing mechanism from a strategic perspective. How do we use, uh, an amount, an expenditure of approximate amount to provide service to the community? To boost economic development, uh, with, within. The policies that we have built into our comprehensive and strategic plans, how do we do that most effectively? We don't have an economic development office.
Right.
Within the city. Um, but we have people that are able to act in portions of, of their time as economic development drivers. Given, given the right set of tools.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
I was just gonna mention that, you know, in the, in the four presentations from the four years. From GSI on economic development in Liberty Lake. I feel like I got more information from this. Ten slides tonight in terms of where people are coming and going and who we should be targeting than we ever received, at least in, in the four presentations that I've seen. So I think it would be really, really helpful, especially as we are targeting businesses to relocate into our city. To be able to tell them five percent of your customers are going to Wendy's afterwards. Or ten percent are coming from the Hub Sports Center or things like that. I think that, that type of data, uh, for a, um. For a potential business is, is critical. Um, I'm hoping we can go back three or four slides and I'm not sure, keep going. Right here, oh, uh, the one that had all the list of others. This isn't the entire list, obviously. Um, but I think it's interesting to note the cities that are already taking advantage of this. The one question that I did have is, um, is that Auburn, our Auburn or is it a different Auburn, Auburn? Um, in Washington State? And are there, uh, other than Seattle, are there other cities that use this in Washington?
Absolutely, that is Auburn, um, you're Auburn, uh, we do work with the city of Seattle as well. Um, you know, this being a marketing document for our, our company as a whole, we do show, show sort of the. The, uh, larger organizations that we work with, um, but I work with. As I said, I manage our current customers and our future potential customers, uh, for the Pacific Northwest region in general. So I work with cities, um, you know, as, as large as Seattle and as small as about a two thousand population, um, city. So we, we cover the full gambit of, of different sizes of cities.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunn? I'm just curious and it's a question to the vendor regarding the data. Uh, I heard you say directly that, um, there is anonymity, I'd say scrubbed was the word regarding, um, the actual source of the information. And I'm just wondering how I can actually, you know, verify that what you're reporting here is accurate. Tell me about what, you know, verification or authentication is done to demonstrate that the statistics you're presenting are accurate.
Absolutely, that's a great question, um, and I'd be happy to send some, some additional information that we have to, to include it, uh, to mark after this. Um, but to give you sort of the high-level answer right now, as I mentioned, we did start working in the private sector before we started working with cities. And if you work with a big box store like Target, for example, um, they already have an idea of. Of, you know, how many people are coming through their door every single day. So, um, we are able, we are currently constantly testing our data versus, versus ground truth information that we have. Like ticketed events or store counters or credit card transactions, things of that nature. It's something that we do on a very consistent basis. Because we know that there's no need for you to pay for data if you don't have confidence in the accuracy of that data. Um, so all of our tests, like I said before, run from an accuracy standpoint of about ninety-two to ninety-eight percent.
Thank you, any other questions? Any other further questions? Okay, all right.
Thanks, Ganon, appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time, everybody.
Thank you.
So we already revealed the early reveal on the recommendation slide, but if you can pop that back up there, Evan. Uh, what, essentially what we're recommending, uh, and obviously we're not asking you to make a decision tonight. We, this, number one is coming from the language of the Comprehensive Plan Economic Development Chapter. Is we want to prepare and implement a local economic development strategy. We want the council to be involved in that by setting some parameters so that we know what targets we're searching for. Um, and obviously we want to include, uh, all of these other partners that you see up here. Um, but in order to do that, we're going to have to, um, we're going to have to have some discussions and some planning similar to what we did. With our strategic planning, uh, retreat. I'm not saying it has to be exactly that style of meeting, but we're going to have to do some kind of planning. In order to understand what those parameters are. And then as we've just talked about at some future meeting, um, we would bring back for council's consideration. Um, a license agreement with, with, with Placer, um, so that you can consider that. So that we could use that as kind of the bedrock of all of the strategies going forward. That fit into the overall economic development strategy. And so with that, I stand for any questions that you might have. No decision-making tonight, just wanted to put all of this information in front of you and get you thinking about what steps we may want to take next. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mark, um, so it, is the, is the offering kind of, is it an à la carte type of thing? Or do you get access to whatever it is their offering is? Like, do, do they have one offering to municipalities? Or is it a, if you want to access this sort of information, it's X amount add-on type of thing? How, how does that work?
So I, I, I am posit- I am positive that there are other add ons that. Could be considered going forward. All of the things that we've talked about thus far, not only. Myself with Placer, but Placer presenting here are out of the box capabilities that are. Are hours on day one and going forward. And so we we would not propose to start looking at add on capability. Anytime soon.
Mayor Protim.
Mark, if we're going to proceed with doing something like this, I do think that we should. Have a couple of different companies present to us. I assume that there are others nationally who do this type of work. Although I haven't haven't foggiest who those are. But I'm wondering if instead of just, you know, signing off on on a contract with Placer, if we could have. A couple of more options available to us as well. To either help us, help us confirm that Placer is the one we should go with. Or perhaps we could find something else that would be more cost advantageous and would give us more information.
We we can absolutely put some information together. I I can tell you that. We did that preliminarily. And and Placer is by far, I I believe, the most advantageous. But we can, we can put some information together and bring back some comparables for you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kurtz?
Not a question, but Mark, I appreciate sort of the forward thinking with this. I know we've talked about economic development and. Bits and pieces over the last couple of years, and we made the step away. From our contract with GSI, but I appreciate that we're looking at actually investing in a similar fashion in in our own sort of independence in a way to do some of that work and to have our own staff be creative and thinking about that. And I think it just shows a little bit of the evolution of the city. In where we have been and where we are headed with our own growth. So I appreciate. The opportunity. I did not know this stuff existed. It makes me think differently about my phone always. But I do appreciate, and I'm also thinking about, and I'm sure that you are as well, I like the idea of doing some sort of retreat ish type thing to think about a big picture piece of it. But the the ability to partner with our businesses and help them grow because that helps the city grow. And then also how we can partner with some of our other regional. The other partnerships that we have that you mentioned, and I think one of the other slide presentations for tonight. So thank you.
Yeah, well, I I appreciate the those comments and and I'll I'll say it if I didn't. It was implied. I didn't say it. I'll say it now. It it's not our goal to. Become a chamber, right? That the chamber is the chamber. But how do we position ourselves to be the the most effective partners for the businesses inside of the city? That's really what we're searching for, so.
Councilmember Dunn.
I'm great for the research, and I think this is definitely a good step in our direction for making economic development activity happen. I'm curious if at the moment there is a staff member whose job description includes the qualifications to make use of this data, who is not already fully allocated. And was there people within our staff that could take advantage of and make use of this?
That's a great question, and thinking back to our priority based budgeting concept with the programs and how those are allocated, we would. We would be. We would be proposing some reallocations in order to free up those segments so that could be done. And that that isn't to say that in some future year, we wouldn't necessarily propose. Bringing in someone as an economic development coordinator or something like that. We're not there yet. I don't foresee us being there for a couple of years, but that's a potential future outcome for sure.
Councilmember Spencer.
Well, and it sounds like. Various staff members may be able to use this, you know, in in anticipating what type of attendance we might have at at city events and things like that, that may not have. A direct impact on on economic. Activity. I think that could be really helpful as well.
Yes, agreed.
When you think back to Jen's presentation earlier, right? Barefoot in the park. We don't know where everybody comes from. You know, this would give us a good opportunity to in in the Symphony, our all of our really big events, give us a different avenue to analyze it and, you know, maybe we can, you know. Push that information out in a different way to get more liberty residents or get people to come from farther and partner with Spokane on some of that advertising.
Well, not only that, but I think that it it leads to the potential of. Opportunities in subsequent years as well, because if we're able to say, you know, in twenty twenty six. Ten percent of people attending this event or that event or going here or going there came from this location or went to this location. Then we could approach that location the next year and say, hey, this is going to be a big part of your business. Do you guys want to? Sponsor something, or do you want to be involved in some way? So I think it provides for enormous opportunities.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda.
All right, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items nine A through G.
Second, my councilmember Kurtz, all in favor of approving the Consent Agenda Items A through G, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Mayor, make a motion to approve General Business Item ten A, the donation from Emma Love's Dog Foundation to Liberty Lake Police Department K nine program.
Second, we have a second, I councilmember Kurtz. Are there any questions on this one before we go to vote? No, I decided really appreciate. Support that we're getting from the community on the new program and really excited to get it get it going. And everybody knows that the new canine is the name, right? No, it's Maverick, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, are they training now?
Yeah, yeah.
Maverick.
Yeah. So always excited about that. All right, those in favor of approving General Business Action Item A, please say aye. Any opposed? I'm not hearing any. Motion passes six zero.
Make a motion to approve General Business Item ten B, the appointment of Gary Edwards to the Parks and Arts Commission.
You have a second. Welcome, Gary. Would you would you mind joining us at the podium and just tell us a little about yourself? Nancy Hill and. Jen and I interviewed you, Gary. I can't think of a better qualified person. If you guys had a chance to go through his. His application and resume. It was, I almost didn't have to interview him based on what was there, but it was, we had a great interview. And so if you want to give us a little bit of your background.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
We can, thanks.
All right, it's a pleasure to be here. Yeah, my name is Gary Edwards. I was born in Spokane in nineteen forty one and grew up in Coeur d'Alene. I lived the last twenty two years in. Post Pauls and downsized. So we bought a house at Trutina in Liberty Lake, December twenty seven. Two thousand twenty four. So I always like to be of service to the communities where I. Moved to and I've been a member of Kiwanis and Rotary in different communities. And this time I saw the ad saying that you needed volunteers to help out with the Park and Arts Commission. So I says, well, why not apply for that? That sounds like fun. And so far, yes, it's been an enjoyable experience, meeting and making new friends. And getting settling into the new community. So my background is that. I played in the Spokane Symphony when I was still in high school for four years, starting when I was a junior in high school. And I also played in the first rock and roll band in Spokane about that time. So I had the experiences from one extreme to the other. I played in bands from singles to symphonies to opera to civic theater. Over the years, and my works have been performed in many. States, many cities and many countries. My most recent successes. Were that I had two musicals that premiered in New York City that I composed the music for. In two thousand twenty two and two thousand twenty three. So that was an enjoyable experience. And in two thousand twenty four, I received an honorary degree in composition. For composing in North Carolina for basically they performed a Christmas cantata that I wrote. And so on my website, which I have. My address here, if you don't mind a very subtle pitch. So EdwardsMusicSite.com, by the way, which is also the name of my LLC. There's seventeen books that I've written, fourteen music CDs. An opera and three screenplays plus hundreds of other pieces of music. So you'll spend hours entertaining. At my music website and YouTube site. Okay. Personally. I've been married for forty nine years and my wife and I have. Raised three children and eight grandchildren, and now we have four great grandchildren. So I don't know how long I'm going to be around because we don't buy green bananas anymore, but. I'm looking forward to the. The future as long as I can help out and be of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council have any questions? Councilmember Ball?
The name of your rock band?
It's called Tom Stewart and the Rockers.
Okay.
Go Google it. I think I saw a few remarks on the internet.
Fantastic. Anybody else? All right, well, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of of approving the appointment of Gary Edwards to the Parks and Arts Commission, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, welcome to the Parks and Arts Commission. Motion passes six zero. We're looking forward to your participation.
Thanks, it's gonna be fun.
Thank you. All right, workshops we already did, so we're up to council comments. Anything from the council? Mayor Protim?
I'll just make one brief comment. I think. I think we received a very big lesson. In not counting our chickens before they hatch on this, on the issue of the the. Library grant. And I think that proves that the actions that we took. Late last year and early this year were the right actions. Because. We all faced an enormous amount of pressure. To either put this in the budget or move forward with the construction, assuming that we were going to get that grant. And I think we made a good decision in waiting. To count that money. Because as we found out tonight, it was not a sure thing. And we dodged a huge bullet, I believe, because had we done that. We and and we proceeded forward, we would now be sitting around this dais trying to figure out how to fill a million dollar hole. In the construction of of the library. So. I hope that we will just keep that in mind as we're having these future discussions. About the construction of of the new library. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, I want to echo Councilmember Cargill's perspect- perspective specifically that the legislators and committees of the state of Washington. Heard loud and clear from this dais that we don't want your grant. And in doing so, then chose to fund what they thought were other communities and other organizations that thought it of value. So to be very clear, it was the choice of this dais to decline, and the state answered handily, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other council comments? Right, not hearing any. We have no public hearings or appeals. We have one resolution, number fourteen B, Rochelle.
Resolution two zero four seven K, a resolution of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the adopted personnel policy for all employees of the city of Liberty Lake.
Okay, we have a motion and then discussion?
Motion to approve our resolution two dash zero four seven K A. Second? K, I'm sorry, K.
Okay, we have a motion, a second discussion among the council. Any questions? Right, not hearing any. We do take public comment on resolutions. So if there's anybody in chambers or online who'd like to make a public comment. On this topic only, this resolution zero two zero four seven K for the personnel policy, please either speak up now or ever hold your peace. If there's anybody online, please send a note to our meeting host in chat. We have anybody? No? Okay, all right, so no public comment. Again, one more chances. Council have any questions? Right, not hearing any. Those in favor of approving Resolution zero two dash zero four seven K, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes five zero, five one, excuse me. All right, ordinance has been moved. We have no emergency ordinances. Introduction of upcoming agenda items is next. You don't have the spreadsheet at your desk. So going through this, I know there's some things on here that are. Passed, I'm sorry, probably had. Is this the? I've got one that says April fifteenth.
Yeah, I think this is an older one. But I I just don't think that date has been updated at the top.
Well, I see there's a whole bunch of things that are on here that weren't on when we looked at it this morning. I think.
Yeah.
Rochelle, do you happen to have the current one we can put up on the screen?
And as Rochelle's pulling that up, I think if we move down from May sixth, everything beyond May sixth is in its. Proposed place.
Okay.
But let's confirm that if we have.
Okay. Right, if not, we can go ahead and just start with that. So we talked about the economic development strategy today. Next meeting, Housing Element Update, Lisa, good on that. And Hub, Tiff and Lift reimbursements. Mark and Kyle and I are actually meeting with Commissioner Cooney. The day before this meeting about this, no context has been given. I'm going to try to find out, so it'll be interesting. At least since I've been here, we haven't. That has not been a. Typical meeting that we we have, so I don't think Mark has any insight either, so it'll be.
I I don't, unfortunately.
Yeah, so I don't know if it has to do with with anything with the hub or anything else on the list, so we will report back at that meeting along with the. The update. And then we get into Transportation Improvement Plan, Facilities Master Plan and things going out a little bit farther. So. On the TBDs, we've got Code of Ethics, Social Media, we're still TBD on that.
Yes, yeah, Sean just got the revisions to us.
Okay, super.
Today.
All right, so we'll still.
Be several iterations, but yeah, we're working on.
Okay, great. So we're in process. Transparency Act, we're putting in the Governance Manual. Can we take that off of here since it's going in the Governance Manual? We'll leave it on for visibility.
Doesn't matter, either way.
For transparency.
Yeah, you can leave it on, that's fine.
All right, Winter Glow, obviously we have our workshop coming up. Housing Comp Plan Update, that will be Lisa's when the time comes, and then we we go out a little bit further. Is there anything? That we're missing that we need to, that's not as part of our normal business that we need to add to our workshops? Mayor Protim.
The secondhand smoke ordinance issue or whether it's going to be an ordinance or not, I know we were kind of keeping that on. We don't have a specific day is my understanding, but we were keeping it on the running list. So is that accurate?
It is accurate, and I. I remember seeing, it must have fallen off. It's so what what we agreed to do last time was to to bring back a workshop to talk about the prospect. Of. A civil infraction avenue. So so I think we need to just build that into some something downstream of. June third. And and we can find some time to do that.
Okay.
The only other thing I had, Mayor, was whether. It would be too soon. Or. A good idea to put the winter glow, a further winter glow discussion slash workshop on June third. Since we're having the. Town hall on the second.
That's that's probably advisable, considering that the Winter Glow Board, and I think we discussed this, but the Winter Glow Board has asked for. A decision on the purchase of the displays by June sixteenth. The only meeting available to make that decision is June third, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
It's, we're working on the.
Oh, I was just gonna say the adding the things that we pushed off for tonight.
Oh, yeah, Rochelle's got that to put on the next agenda.
But weren't you, the Governance Manual thing, weren't you working on that? Or who's working on?
Yeah, so Jed and Mike and I have been working on the Governance Manual where. I would say one good working meeting away from having the draft that Mark is following along with, and then Mark will give us some idea of. When and what the next step is for getting that out to everybody. So. Lot of Friday afternoons, it's super fun.
All right, well, we'll look to you guys for a date for something for that. All right, anybody else? All right, we are back up to citizen comments. We welcome Rose back to the to the podium and Rochelle, if you can just make a note that. Rose is making up citizen comment, that'd be great.
Again, thank you for having me tonight. I love, I also, I always like staying for the whole meeting to see what discussions on. I'm very excited about the Economic Development Strategy Discussion. Yes, the tourism slides are enticing, but. It's 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 nice to see you trying to optimize your your team and your dollars. I just wanted to give a personal accolade or personal shout out for Placer AI. Any tourism data and visitation data that an entity like myself or someone else would be presenting to you is tapping into Placer AI. They are like the purest source for that type of data and very trustworthy. You saw the DMOs listed up there, visit. You saw the DMOs listed up there, Visit California is some big dogs. We use Placer AI, Placer AI with other third-party processes to present information to you. And us ourselves are looking into Placer, Placer AI account. So in your economic development strategy, when you're thinking of tourism, which is economic development, how Mrs. Spokane could partner with you to help grow and build more visitation and more spend in your area? Totally love to do that. Would also see if there's an opportunity as a contracted vendor to be able to have access to your place AI data because we could be the representative that could help translate some of those event statistics for you on behalf of like visitation and impact if that would be allowable, because that is something that we're used to doing in other platforms. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Super. Thanks for staying.
I'm not responding to the citizen comment, but.
You have a minute to go.
Yeah, we had a conversation with Placer about auxiliary users and and that is an option that we can explore and I'm sure work out an agreement within the cost structure, so.
Super. All right, anybody else in chambers? Anybody online? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, so there's no executive session, so I guess we will go ahead and adjourn, see everybody at the next meeting.